And the city council chambers will come to order. We welcome Reverend Jim Sanders for our invocation. Will you stand, please?
Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight thanking you for your love and thanking you for your mercy and your grace and your forgiveness. Father, we just thank you for this day that you have given us. Father, we just pray that you would be with this meeting tonight. Father, we're thankful for people who have given of their time and give of their time and their efforts to serve in the capacity of governing. And Father, we just pray that you'd help them remember as they do so. Father, that it is you that also ordain government. And Father, that we're doing your will. We thank you for those that are going to be honored tonight and for their accomplishments. And Father, we just pray that you would continue to bless them throughout their lives. That you would be with all those here. We thank you for those other leaders that are involved in our government, Father, that serve. Father, we just pray that you'd continue to let them understand that it is a servant's responsibility as they govern their people. Father, we thank you and we'll give your name the praise. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Reverend Sanders. We've had a roll call, please Ms. Kirby.
Councilwoman Pearson, Councilman DeGaris.
Here.
Councilman Crocker, Councilman Tinsley.
Here.
Councilman Russian, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Abshir.
Here.
We do have a call.
Thank you. You will notice that as Councilwoman Pearson's name was called, she is not here. And she would like to give a message to the citizens and the people in our community for their support, their prayers, and their thoughts during this time. And she will be back to represent her Ward 1. And we just ask that you continue to keep her in your thoughts and prayers. Disclosure of interest. Any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous Hearing none, we move to citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council. First, let me say thank you for-
Excuse me, Jim. We need your name and address.
I'm sorry, Jim Chrisman, 464 North Main. Thank you for your service to the community. It's a very difficult time. A few meetings ago, I was honored to be appointed to the Industrial Development Authority Board. Tonight, that board is going to be dissolved. But I was hooked and decided to look under the covers of some of the things that have been happening in Poplar Bluff. Check me if you will on my history. First, Cripple Creek TDD and the Conference Center TDD were formed. Then along came the Regional TDD and covered an area from Business 67 West to the 67 bypass down to approximately Highway 53. A 1% sales tax was imposed on most of the businesses in this district. I should note that it was not a vote of the people that imposed this tax, but rather than the owners of the property were the voters. This was the brainchild of I don't know who. It was implemented by the property owners. There are four directors of this body. The Poplar Bluff City Manager, the Mayor, the Presiding Commissioner, and the head of one of the forming TDDs. I'll notice that the forming TDD also has the Mayor and the City Manager on it, so that the Mayor and City Manager are actually represented a couple of times. About the same time, Eight Points entered the picture. This is a TIF as opposed to a TDD, a Tax Increment Financing District, with an additional 1/2% sales tax on certain businesses within the district. That's a relatively small area that Eight Points represents. Again, no vote of the people to put this additional 1/2% sales tax on. Both the Regional TDD and the Eight Points were approved by this council. With this organization or misorganization that it creates, I have a few questions that I like to ask. Number one, over $300, $3.5 million worth of property have been purchased. Who holds the title to this property? When an invoice is received by the city, is a purchase order then issued or is the purchase order issued before the invoice comes in? Closed meetings have been a regular part of this council for the last two or three years. When are the minutes of these council meetings available under the Sunshine Law or any other There's an annual audit. How do we get a look at that annual audit? The actions and minutes of the TDD refers to resolutions. Where are these resolutions? I might also note that the same thing happens here at council. Things are passed without the details being there. And I can only think of one instance where the details have been there and it, you know, it seems like it should be part of the process. It appears that most of the invoices that I have seen from the TDD are approved by a very small group of people. And I'm really concerned that maybe nobody else, this council or anybody else is looking over the shoulder to see that these bills are reasonable. Question, and I'm assuming that the Phase 3 of the Oak Grove, is that west of the bypass?
Yes.
Phase 3?
It is.
Thank you. The first bill of the TDD was paid to Eight Points for reimbursement of publication cost. How can publication costs amount to $23,925.41? What was being advertised that took $23,000? The second bill was to Eight Points for a $200,000 consulting fee. Why did we need to pay Eight Points, you know, a subset of our city? Why did we need to pay them $200,000? Where did this money go? And where are the information on the appraisals of the properties that have been purchased? I would like answers for these. And I have the list if you need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chrisman.
Jim, could you give me that list? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other citizens' input?
Yes, council members. John McKee, 1171 County Road 249. I was reading the paper today, and I would like to read you a short article that was in the paper, and I think it's something that probably needs to be looked into. Said, "I would like to request that a survey be taken for the August 2013 bond rate of 8% that the previous council voted for. We know that CDs are only paying about 2%, less so it seems to me that the city is being ripped off." So this probably won't make the paper, but it seems to me someone needs to look into this. Since they went into, since they want to criticize the current council so much, let's look into the previous council. And I think that sounds like a reasonable deal. Whoever wrote this didn't sign it, so I don't know who did. But it seems like a real legitimate request. And one other thing that I would like to bring up is a few months ago, I was in one of the meetings, and I brought up a lot of people in the city wearing their pants way below their waist, down below actually their butt, and the only thing you could see is their underwear. The council said they would look into it, and since then, I have seen nothing one way or the other about my request. I'm sure that about 95% of the citizens don't care to see that any more than I do. And I would like to know if you're doing anything, plan to do anything, or one way or the other.
So we researched some ordinances. Evidently, they've researched some ordinances. I'm not sure what we've come up with yet, but-
We checked with other cities. There's only two other cities in the state that did that, and they had to repeal that ordinance because it violates their rights.
Well, now, from my understanding, there are several school districts-
The schools can't.
-that will not allow that in a school. And if a school doesn't allow it, why cannot a city not allow it? That don't make sense to me. And in order to put a stop to it, somebody's got to start someplace.
Right after you came, we checked with other cities. We have a list, sir, that we can check with other cities on, and we checked. And we found two that had done it, but they had to repeal those, so.
So basically, there's nothing can be done about it.
A school district can have different rules because they're required to have certain orders and stuff. So not all the constitutional protections that would protect the general public, always the students don't receive all of those because of the necessity of order that in a school's atmosphere. So you can do that at a school, but you can't do it at the public level, unfortunately.
Don't make sense to me, but I would like to get your input on this article that I've read.
I'm not sure what they're talking about. I'll have to look and see. The August-
August of 2013? Yeah, bond rate, they evidently had agreed to an 8% bond, and the interest rate at that time was quite a bit less and which would be allowing the city to be ripped off by a lot of money.
Yeah, I'm not aware of the city having any bonds at 8% right now, so I'll go back and look at the August 13 council meeting and see if I can figure out what they're talking about.
Okay. Is there any way I could get an answer for that?
Sure. If you give me your telephone number, I can give you a call and- Okay. All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Any other citizens' input? Moving on to proclamations and awards, Mayor Biddy Abshir will present a proclamation to the Poplar Bluff Senior High Lady Mules Track and Field Team for being the first team in Poplar Bluff High School's history to win track and field state title. So if all of those young ladies were, we want you to know how proud we are of you and we want to honor you tonight, and we ask that you all come up here and I'll meet you down there. And then there's mine here for everybody. Would you all come up here and line up and face back toward the TV, please? Yeah, right in here, ladies.
Because that's where the cameras sit.
Beautiful trophy. Whereas the city council of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri is always pleased to recognize those events which bring honor upon the community and its citizens. And whereas the Poplar Bluff Senior High Lady Mules Track and Field Team has distinguished itself by capturing the MSHSA A Class 4A Track and Field State Title. And whereas the Lady Mules Track and Field Team has had, without saying, an outstanding and record-breaking season in 2015. And whereas the Lady Mules Track and Field Team won the Seymour North Conference Title as well as a district championship. And whereas the Lady Mules Track and Field Team became the first in Poplar Bluff High School's history to win the track and field state title. And whereas members of this Lady Mules Championship Team are. Would you all give your names, please, starting here with you? Real loud now.
Jacinda Ellis, Pastor Harris, Haley Aiken, Chrisman Aiken, Kayla Shonky. Oh, absolutely. Lexie Happer, Kelly Webb, Kayla Williams.
Coach Bell.
Maggie Mathews.
And whereas participation in organized athletics helps to build character and teaches good sportsmanship. And whereas to excel in any sport, a young person must demonstrate, in addition to a great deal of natural ability, an outstanding spirit of dedication, enthusiasm, and hard work. And whereas the city council of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri is justly proud of the Lady Mules Track and Field Team and feels mandated to celebrate their remarkable achievement by calling up on all of the citizens of the city of Poplar Bluff to join with the members of the city council in expressing their most sincere congratulations for the individual and collective efforts of these fine young women. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Poplar Bluff that it now formally expresses its thanks and gratitude to the members of the Lady Mules Track and Field Team and to head coach Beth Lewis Muse and her coaching staff on this memorable occasion. Further, the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to certify a copy of this proclamation and to further cause this proclamation to be forever preserved in the official records of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, proclaimed this 15th day of June 2015 by the Honorable Biddy Abshir, Mayor of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, signed by Mayor Abshir and Pamela Kirby, City Clerk. Give this to you, Coach. And we have a copy for all the girls. It's in order for motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda. All council's favors, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. City clerks.
Let me read my first. Each council person received a copy of the consolidated statement of funds on deposits in various banks as of May 31, 2015. Those amounts are in the Commerce Bank, $2,869,609.24. In Peoples Community State Bank, $563,045.78. In First Midwest Bank, $9,544,650.43. In First Community Bank, $249,945.4. In Sterling Bank, $6,409,130.42. In Southern Missouri Bank, $334,083.80. This gives us a grand total of $19,970,464.71. And of this amount, total funds on deposit for the account of City Hall is $11,198,383.99. Total funds on deposit for the account of the Coliseum is $249,945.4. Total funds on deposit for the account of the Park Department is $1,332,358.19. And total funds on deposit for the account of Minister Utilities is $7,189,777.49. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We need a motion.
Uh, no, the consent agenda.
Okay. Moving to our workshop items, item A, the city council will discuss repealing and replacing the city of Poplar Bluff's debt policy.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have Joy Howard, who is our new financial advisor, and she's going to kind of briefly discuss the current debt policy that we have and why we need to repeal it.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. As you know, as your new financial advisor, one of the first things I do is review a variety of documents that the city has, particularly those that have to do with management of debt, capital planning, reserve policies, whether you have them, whether you don't have them. That's kind of where I start when I work for a new entity. In reviewing your policy, I have to start off, I guess, by saying that most of my clients don't have debt policies. The Missouri statutes are very restrictive in terms of what they allow governments to borrow. And so it's like, why make it worse than what it already is? This is kind of my attitude. However, I do have a few clients that do policies primarily because standard and pores gives you a plus. When they're reviewing all of the factors that comprise the rating, if you have a debt policy, it's one of the things they like to check off, saying you have good debt management. However, when reviewing your policy, I thought it was way too restrictive, difficult to understand, overly imposes burdens on the city, and it's extremely, it would be extremely difficult for you to implement just because it's such a high level of things that it requires you to do. I don't know any cities your size that have like debt managers or somebody on staff that would really understand all of the things that this makes you do. So I'd like to walk through and just give you a couple of examples. Oh, and actually, I'm going to give you the conclusion before I do this. My conclusion, by the way, after I read it, I started thinking about marking up some of these sections and changing what I'm going to talk to you about. But at the end of the day, it was so extensive that I'm going to recommend that you repeal this tonight, and then I'm going to work on something shorter, more simplistic. I passed out to all of you a sample of a Maryland Heights policy that I had assisted them with, and it was only like four or five pages long. And that's kind of what I'd like you to speak. But going back to where I was to give you a few examples, on page seven, it talks about debt coverage. Debt coverage is a concept that refers to revenue bonds. Like if you have water or sewer revenue bond issue, then your ordinance is going to spell out debt coverage. And on seven, it's under B, second to the last paragraph under B, oh, before one. Is everyone who wants to look at this, it says while each potential? Okay. So basically, if you were doing bonds, coverage means that for every $1 of debt service, you have to have net income, revenues minus expenses of a certain dollar amount above and beyond debt service. And in this case, it would have to be $1.25 for each $1 of debt service. That used to be a proper number. It used to be the industry standard. As time has gone on, that standard has actually come in. Most of the issues I work on are under 125% coverage. The state, if you get a state loan, if they buy your bonds, the state only requires a $1.10. Why would you want it to be lower? Well, this is lovely for the investors. Really, the higher this number is, the better it is for investors. The higher this number is, the worse it is for you. Because if you have to, if you were doing revenue bonds and you have to have a $1.25 of net income for every dollar of debt service, you're going to have to pass user charges that are a lot higher than if you only had to have a $1.10 for every $1 of debt. That's the bottom line. This covenant would force you to have excessively high user charges. Another example is on page 11. Page 11 basically says that the city's going to avoid doing any taxable debt to keep your interest rates lower. Well, a few years ago, when we had the economic crisis, the federal government created what was called Build America Bonds. They were taxable bonds, but the federal government returned to you an interest subsidy. And so I have a lot of clients that took advantage of those kinds of loans and have interest rates that were way under what tax exempt rates were at the time, and they're still like under 3% and look like a good transaction even today after rates came back down. Now, we don't have Build America Bonds anymore, but there's all sorts of talk in Congress about creating similar kind of vehicles. And I would think you would want to have the flexibility to decide what kind of borrowing you're going to do at the time that you do it, as opposed to having to go back and amend a policy. On page 13, there's all sorts of provisions in here on disclosure. And if I get into great detail, because it actually shows up about three different times in here, the disclosure is something that the city is required to do under each of its outstanding debt obligations. You're required to do certain annual filings, and you're required to do so as a result of SEC rules, which get very complicated. However, the bottom line is this. The bottom line of this policy doesn't say the city will comply with its disclosure obligations and do what you have to do. It says that you'll do everything you have to do, and you're going to make sure that you disclose everything that would be necessary to inform an investor about what they're investing in. Well, I don't even know what that is. I'd hate to have to do that. So I don't want you to have to do any more than what's reasonably required. And I think I have just one more example. On page 19, it requires that you do things to prevent the city from having what's called interest rebate. So there's federal rules that say, in general, again, all these things are very complicated. We could spend hours working on this, any one of these sections. That's why I don't want you to have to spend hours on it. That's why this has to go. Basically, the federal government, if you borrow at 3%, and let's say US Treasury rates go way high, up to 5%, you take your 3% borrowing and you invest at 5%, the federal government requires that you take that difference, that 2% difference, and you have to send it back to the US Treasury. It's a real bad tax, basically. But this provision says you could do everything you have, you can not to have to send that money back to the federal government. Well, that may mean you're investing really short term or the most conservative kind of investments you can get. And chances are, if you do that, if you try and prevent arbitrage, chances are you're not getting as much investment as you're entitled to, investment return, that 3% I mentioned. I want to make sure that you get the full amount, even if it means you've gotten a little bit more than you should and you have to send it back to the Treasury. Better to send something back to the Treasury than get less than you're entitled to. So I don't like that section at all. And I could go on all night, but I'd just highlight a few of the things that made me go, ugh. Let's get rid of this and do something more like the sample you have in front of you. It will take me about, well, I'm going to try and have it to you at the next council, but absolutely, I promise you'll have it within four weeks. Questions, comments?
There questions or comments from the council or the audience?
We need this in place before we-
We need this in place before we start issuing the bonds.
Excuse me, Peter, would you talk?
Do we need this in place before we start issuing the bonds?
I think it would be a good idea.
Can we not have it by the next meeting?
I'll get it if you ask me and you say, please, please, I will.
Please, please.
So you said most cities don't have debt policies, they go by state statute?
Most of my clients.
Okay. Do you recommend that we have a debt policy? I mean, I'm assuming you are, since you're going to work on one.
Only because, only because you do have one now, so I think you should have just like threw it out the door, and I don't know what standard and pores is seeing and what they expect of you.
Okay.
Nothing else, I'd make a motion, move this item to the voting session, be held tonight.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to move workshop item A to the voting session for this evening. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item B, the City Council will review a proposed contract from RICO for office equipment relative to the Police Department.
Yes, Madam Mayor, if you remember, you voted down the RICO proposal that included all the departments at the last meeting. So far, the Police Department's the only department that's in favor of the RICO proposal. They think they can actually save money this way. I thought the RICO representative was going to be here tonight, she's not. And also, I don't have anybody from the Police Department, I'm just going by what Mike McLean said. You know, the total department cost is $316 a month, and then so much for each copy, which would take care of the maintenance on the machines and the toner for the machines.
Do we own the machines that we've got there now?
Yes, we do.
And you know how much that maintenance agreement is?
I don't.
$1,200 annually.
Annually.
And that's on one machine?
And it covers the toner and your staples.
And this would add up to around $4,000?
Probably. I think this, what this eliminates is, you know, each office having a desktop printer at their computer, and they would be able to get up and go to different, to one printer.
Make a motion, we'll move this to the voting session, be held tonight.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to move to the voting session tonight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Moving to our action required items, item AA, Bill Number 7831. The City Council will take action on the ordinance authorizing the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds mid continental nail corporation project series 2015 in a principal amount not to exceed $4,918,000 for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring equipment for an industrial development project in the city, approving a plan for the project, and authorizing the mayor to enter into certain agreements and take certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds.
Make a motion for the first reading?
Second. Motion's been made and seconded for first reading of Bill Number 7831. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
In order to the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the city to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds mid continental operation project series 2015 in a principal amount not to exceed $4,918,000 for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring equipment for an industrial development project in the city, approving a plan for the project, and authorizing the mayor to enter into certain agreements and take certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds.
Move for second reading of Bill Number 7831.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for second reading of Bill Number 7831. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Any opposed? Motion carried, Mr. Smith.
In order to the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the city to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds mid continent now corporation project series 2015 in a principal amount not to exceed $4,918,000 for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring equipment for an industrial development project in the city, approving a plan for the project and authorizing the mayor to enter into certain agreements and take certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds.
Move for adoption.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded for adoption. Roll call, please.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Yes.
And Mayor Abshire.
Yes.
Does pass.
Thank you, Bill Number 7831 has been adopted. Item BB, Bill Number 7832. The City of Poplar Bluff will take action on an ordinance accepting a proposal from RICO regarding the Police Department.
Move for first reading of 7832.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for the first reading of Bill Number 7832. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
In order to the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, accepting a proposal from RICO for the Poplar Bluff Police Department.
Move for second reading?
Second. Motion's been made and seconded for second reading of Bill Number 7832. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
In order to the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, accepting a proposal from RICO for the Poplar Bluff Police Department.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for adoption of Bill Number 7832. Roll call, please.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Abshire.
No.
The bill fails.
Moving to item CC, Bill Number 7833. The City Council will take action on an ordinance amending the electric rates for the City of Poplar Bluff Municipal Utilities Department.
Move for first reading of Bill Number 7833.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for first reading of Bill Number 7833. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
In order to the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, amending the electrical rates for the Municipal Utilities Department of the City of Poplar Bluff.
Move for second reading?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for second reading of Bill Number 7833. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
In order to the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, amending the electric rates for the Municipal Utilities Department of the City of Poplar Bluff.
Move for adoption.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded for adoption of Bill Number 7833. Roll call, please.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Abshire.
Yes.
We have four yes votes.
Bill Number 7833 has been adopted. Item DD, Bill Number 7834. The City Council will take action on an ordinance rescinding the Industrial Development Authority Board.
Move for first reading?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for first reading of Bill Number 7834. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
In order to the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, rescinding Resolution Numbers 820 and 821 establishing the Industrial Development Authority Board for the city.
Move for second reading?
Second. Motion has been made and seconded for second reading of Bill Number 7834. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
In order to the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, rescinding Resolution Numbers 1820 and 1821 establishing the Industrial Development Authority Board for the city.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for adoption of Bill Number 7834. Roll call, please.
Councilman Tinsley.
No.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Yes.
And Mayor Abshire.
Yes.
The bill does fail.
Bill Number 7834 has been adopted.
No, didn't it? It failed.
It failed.
It takes all four to pass.
You have to have four of them.
Who didn't, I'm sorry, Peter, I don't hear you very well for some reason.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear him say no. Bill Number 7834 has failed. Item EE, Bill Number 7835. The City Council will take action on an ordinance repealing and replacing the debt policy for the City of Poplar Bluff.
Move for first reading of Bill Number 7835.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded for first reading of Bill Number 7835. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
In order to the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, repealing ordinance Number 761 for establishing debt policy for the city.
Move for second reading?
Second. Motion's been made and seconded for second reading of Bill Number 7835. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
In order to the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, repealing ordinance Number 761 for establishing debt policy for the city.
Move for adoption?
Madam Mayor.
Motion has been made and seconded for adoption of Bill Number 7835.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir, oh, excuse me, Jim, go ahead.
The, Jim Kristin, 464 North Main, I'd just like to, to look at the wording of this, repealing and replacing. Is there something there to replace it now?
She's going to come back to the next meeting.
Well, you're, you're doing it all with this meeting with something you don't have in front of you.
I may offer, the ordinance was a change since the issuance of that. We had, originally, we were going to replace it, but because of the...
So you're repealing, you're repealing only?
Repealing only, yes, I'm sorry.
He does have a point, that should be taken now.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Katie, are we ready for roll call? Roll call, please, Ms. Kirby?
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Abshire.
Yes.
The bill does pass.
Bill Number 7835 has been adopted. Item FF, the City Council of City of Poplar Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the Open Meetings Law, Section 610.021.1, .2, .3, .9, .11, .12, .13, .14, RSMO.
Make a motion, we adjourn after the city manager's report.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, go into closed session after the city manager's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Massingham.
Now, the only thing I have to report is, MoDOT is going to start working tonight on the intersection of Oak Grove Road and 67 and Katy Lane. They're going to try to do the majority of this work at night, since it's a heavily traveled highway, so... I think they said it should be completed by sometime in October. And if you'll look down Canal Boulevard or PP Highway, I think they're just about done with the bridge, and they've resurfaced that entire section of the highway. And then they've also resurfaced all of Ditch Road down through Poplar Bluff. Even with MoDOT's money problems, they've done a lot of work around Poplar Bluff this year, so we thank them for that.
Anything else to come before?
I believe we need to reiterate that all that came at no cost to Poplar Bluff, right?
Yes, it did, so...
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that we adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. This meeting is adjourned.